Good evening, everyone. Welcome to November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Select Board meeting for the town of Wilmington. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Frank West, you here?
Lee Maselli here.
Greg Bendel here.
Kyra here.
Garrett Palmer here.
We have just returned from executive session. Now, I'm gonna ask everyone to rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
What leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Frank West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the board if we could have a moment of silence in memory of Gary Robichaud. For those who knew Gary, Gary was a life, well, grew up in Wilmington. He was a member of the class of nineteen seventy-eight. He grew up on Sprucewood Road. I grew up with him. He's a good friend of mine. He ended up thirty years on the fire department, retiring as a lieutenant, moved down to Hickory, North Carolina, where he married his wife Debbie in two thousand and twenty. I was at his wake earlier tonight. He leaves his brothers Eddie and Scott, his sisters Linda and Diane, who passed away several years before. And he has two children, Amanda and Becky. His funeral's gonna be Friday at Wildwood Cemetery. And, you know, I think all that knew Gary, loved Gary, and really appreciated his company. And he always made you laugh, no matter, you know, what the situation was, and made you feel good. So, again, I'd like to offer a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And now, the transmitting of treasury warrants. Number is twenty-four seventeen, twenty-four seventeen W, twenty-four seventeen T, twenty-four seventeen S, twenty-four eighteen, twenty-four eighteen W, twenty-four eighteen T, twenty-four nineteen, twenty-four nineteen W, twenty-four nineteen T, and twenty-four nineteen S. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Approved. We have select board meeting minutes from October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table these minutes and be amended on page two. There were, there were three questions asked by myself. The first one shows that an answer was given by town manager Hull, and the next two do not show answers from him. I believe the second question that I asked about recommendation that the subcommittee did not report to the full committee for a vote. I believe Mr. Hull's response, and I'm just paraphrasing, is that they didn't need to go to the full board for a vote. So, that should be in here, his response. And then, the second, the third question, asking to state the, who received the awards and the amounts of the awards? And it says here that Mr. Hull read the names of recipients into the record, but it's not listed in the record. So, I think that those, that, at least that paper that he provided us with all of the names of the individuals and the amounts that were awarded or not awarded should be attached to the minutes, or because it says it's into the record, it should be listed in writing on the record of the minutes. So, until that is amended, I'd like to table these minutes.
But aren't the, if I may, Mr. Chairman, aren't the awards really awards from the Economic Development Committee? Not, you know, they were read at the selectman meeting, but, I mean, do we need to have them? Because we didn't vote on them. We had no action on them. So, why do we, I don't wanna say it, but, you know, why, why do we need to have them written into the record?
Because they were read. They were provided to us. And it said, and Mr. Hull read them. And it says that the recipients would be put into the record. So, I don't see why we wouldn't. But what are we, what are we hiding?
Oh, I'm not suggesting we're hiding anything. I mean, you know, honestly, I'm one of the recipient, or my company's one of the recipients. And I'm not trying to hide that fact. I just didn't know that we really needed to have it, but I don't really care either way, personally.
Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Just to... Beth, was it you that did these minutes, or Tommy? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, for our first appointment at seven o'clock. Anthony Marini. A right-of-way manager for Verizon. And this is regarding relocating six poles, locating one pole, locating six poles, push brace on Woburn Street.
Good evening, members of the select board. Name is Alexander, last name Marrero, M-A-R-R-E-R-O. I am, will be representing Mr. Marini in this, here in this, during this hearing. I'm an employer Pike Telecom and Renewables LLC, an authorized contractor for Verizon New England Incorporated. Have been asked by them to speak on their behalf about this petition. Verizon New England is petitioning the select board of the town of Wilmington to relocate one pole number one sixty-five S, one pole number...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me. Should we make a motion to open up the public hearing?
I apologize. You're right, yes. Do you have a motion to open up this hearing? Public hearing?
Sure moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Now proceed.
Verizon is petitioning to relocate one pole number one sixty-five S, pole number one sixty-four, pole number one sixty-four PB, one sixty-three, one sixty-three PB, one sixty-two, one sixty-two PB, one sixty-one, one sixty-one PB, one sixty, one sixty PB, one fifty, and one fifty-nine, and one fifty-nine PB, and to place one new pole to be number one fifty-nine A. All poles are located on the western side of Woburn Street, except for the new pole, which will be located on the eastern side. This petition is being completed by Verizon New England due to a request made by Massachusetts Department of Transportation. They are current, they are currently expanding Woburn Street at the intersection of Lowell Street. So, that's why this request is being made. Can also answer any questions that the select board might have about the petition?
If I may, Mr. Chair. This petition is necessary to comply with the ongoing Mass DOT traffic management project, obviously. And just so you know, we did notify the abutters, the town did, and DPW has no concerns with this project. And it is brought to consider number six, if you want to take that out of order.
Mr. Chair, just one question. What exactly is a pushback pole?
A push brace is basi-
Push brace, excuse me.
Push brace. It's basically a pole that is placed usually at a forty-five degree angle, and it's used when there is a force against a pole that is going towards the street instead of against the street, basically. So, it's, it's kinda sorta like a guy wire, but it's working in the opposite direction, basically.
And these are gonna be, this will be a permanent forty-five degree type pole?
Correct.
Do we have, I know we have, most of the poles are vertical, so I guess is there, is there an issue?
I've seen them before, you know, it's just, that's all it is.
Yeah, okay. I was just, like I said, I was just curious, and I didn't know if it was something that was routine in that time.
Basically, we're just replacing like-for-like. Right now, the push braces are on the existing poles. So, we're just replacing the same one, except they're gonna be longer since the new poles are gonna be fifty footers instead of the forty-five feet that are currently there.
Yeah, a question. When are you planning on doing this work?
We hope to do it as soon as possible, obviously. We're trying to start before the winter cutoff. If not, then we're gonna have to do it after the winter cutoff during next year. But obviously, the poles will need to be relocated before the rest of the facilities can be relocated and the street can be widened by Mass Dock.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, is there, in the diagram, is there a reason why fifty-nine, one fifty-nine A is on the residential side of the street and not on the other side where there aren't any residents? I just, I mean, is that gonna be on the sidewalk again? And, you know, people trying to get around a pole? Because right now, it's on the, it's on the left side, and now you're moving it over to the right side.
So, one fifty-nine A is a new pole that's gonna be installed. I'm not showing a particular reason for it, but I'm guessing there might, there should be some facilities, probably some drop wires or something on that side of the street. And obviously, since the span between the poles are not gonna be longer, then we're gonna need a new pole on the opposite side so that we have the necessary clearance over the street.
Well, I, but I see all the poles on the left side, and you're moving that one pole to the right side. Now, you're worried about clearance and everything else. And I'm worried about the pole being in the center of the sidewalk or on someone's property, which it probably can't be, I mean, obviously. So, I, I just didn't know the reasoning why you're moving it. It doesn't...
So, it's a new, one fifty-nine A is new. It's brand new. It's not existing right at the moment.
Again, I understand that. You're, you're replacing one fifty-nine B on the left side and putting in one fifty-nine A, a brand-new one, on the right side. So, my question is, why are you moving? It's going directly across. It's going directly across. What, what's the purpose?
So, one fifty-nine is not being moved. Number one fifty-nine is gonna be, remain in existing location. Opposite one fifty-nine, we'll be placing a new pole once the street is widened at the opposite end of the street. Again, I don't know the specific reason, but I believe because the street is being widened that we need to raise the existing service wires to provide the clearance over the widened street.
Any other questions? Okay, I would, out of order, I'd like to take out the board to consider a request of Verizon New England, Inc. and Redding Municipal Light Department to relocate six poles and locate one pole and locate six pole push brace on Woburn Street.
Chairman, without objection, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
But, Mr. Chair, before we do that, should we ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak under the public?
Does anybody like to speak on this matter? Okay, now I will close the public hearing.
Motion to clo, you, you made his motion, I'm sorry.
It's already been laid, yeah.
Second. All those in favor? Now, taking out order, number six. The board to consider the request of Verizon New England, Inc. Redding Municipal Light Department to relocate six, six poles, locate one pole, and locate six push brace on Woburn Street. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. You're approved.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Alvin, Evan Wolftag. Eagle Scout candidate. This is for a proposed project that you're looking into?
Hello, thank you for having me on tonight.
Welcome.
So, my project will be a hidden wounds memorial going down by the Silver Lake, right next to the bridge. This will be a stone that we will be acquiring from, um, Benevento's and a plaque from Skylight Studios. And it'll, on the stone, it'll have words. It won't be the names of the actual veterans that have lost their life to PTSD, because there's so many, including nine from Wilmington. But on the plaque that goes onto the stone, it will say, "Hidden Wounds Memorial." This memorial serves as a tangible reminder of the sacrifices made by the men and women and their families who have served their country with honor and, as a result, have suffered from the hidden wounds of war. These hidden wounds or sign casualties, often resulting from post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, have contributed to the shocking level of veteran suicide. These veterans, who have defended our country's freedom and democratic ideals, have earned our remembrance and our enduring gratitude. So, that's what I have so far for my project. Do you have any questions?
Have questions?
Chairman, Mr. Bendel? Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Fraughton. Thank you for being here, for your support. Evan, I gotta tell you, I'm really impressed by this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you for taking this on. So, my question is a little unrelated. This is, I assume this is your senior year of high school?
Ah, yeah, this is my senior year, yeah.
At Wilmington High School?
Yes, Wilmington High School.
Congratulations. This is awesome, man. There's, this is so many things that are going on in this busy year of your life. And to take this on, in addition, it just says a lot about you and your family. And really grateful that there's guys like you that are willing to step up and do this amongst all the other obligations that you have at school. So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I appreciate that.
Evan, I'm impressed with it. I, I'm humbled by it. It's so nice to still see young individuals that see an issue and address the issue. It's really, it, it's amazing. And we in Wilmington are fortunate that we've had a number of these projects taken up. And they've all come out absolutely incredible. I have no doubt yours will too. And I just, Wilmington should be proud, and you should be proud. I wish you nothing but the best with it. Greg?
Oh, go ahead, Frank.
Wanted to say congratulations on your pending Eagle Scout. My son is an Eagle Scout. And the thing is, is that you will, you, you won't necessarily realize it now, but you'll realize it in the coming years that it's basically the only thing that you can put on your resume for the rest of your life that you did while you were in high school or before. And even people that don't realize what, what, you know, what specifically an Eagle Scout is, people will say, wow, I know it means something extra. And it'll help you out in college applications. It'll help you out in job placement for literally the rest of your life. I mean, we've had presidents that are Eagle Scouts. We have had astronauts. We've had a myriad of high executives and, you know, people in government, people in private industry. So, again, I applaud any Eagle Scout that, that steps forward, so congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Evan, thank you and congratulations. You know, my son Joe's an Eagle Scout. And just, I know the work that it takes into going into this, all your badges and all the hard work. And I agree, and your senior year with everything else going on. I know it's a good job seeing it through. And I see your parents in the back, so congrats to them, because I know it's been a lot of work the years, worth it. But just congratulations. I love every time the troop brings in another Eagle Scout. It just, this, Wilmington has so many Eagle Scouts. It's just, it's amazing. And it just makes me so proud every time one of you guys come in here. And the project's amazing, absolutely amazing. And another, you know, thing about Wilmington, obviously, as we know, is what we do here for our veterans. And this is just gonna add to, you know, what we have. And congratulations. I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, Evan, thank you for what you're doing on behalf of the veterans and the residents of Wilmington. Mike, thank, thank you for your support, and also Lou, for your guidance with this project. I, I didn't know what hidden wounds were until the veteran ceremony this past Saturday, when it was brought up, that it was veterans taking their own lives, and twenty-two a day. Just astonishing, that, that number. Really sad. And I know that our Veteran Services is top-notch and tries to, to go out and give counseling and help and lend a hand whenever it can. And this is just a wonderful monument. And I was just curious, if you don't mind me asking, a monument like this that is hidden wounds and where, where veterans lose their lives to suicide, would, would a monument like this be placed instead of at Silver Lake, which I know you wanted to do it there, and that's a great spot? I wonder if it, if it would make sense to look at the veteran cer, veteran cemetery for something like this, where, where veterans are losing their lives over this? Just a, just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, of course. And I take that into huge consideration, yes. Our original plan was Silver Lake, which is kinda like where we're planning on putting the actual stone itself, just because it's, you know, by the lake and there is another memorial there that was done by a previous Eagle Scout. So, we're kinda looking at the landscape of it, saying like, this looks like a pretty good spot to put it. So, that's just kinda like where we shifted all of our focus to, so, yeah.
No, I, I did, there are many monuments over there on that Silver Lake. That's why I didn't, this would almost stand out at the veteran cer, cemetery, but that. It's your, you know, it's your project. You put away it on. But I just thought I'd throw that out. But it's great.
Thank you, yeah.
That you're doing this.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. Do you have anything online to collect donations, or is it by check at this address?
So, currently, we are still pending the whole fundraising. We're just kinda looking at local businesses in town. And we will look into doing it online way, like a GoFundMe. And we have the email also, too, so.
Right. Well, definitely keep us posted, because we'll be glad to share it online as well. Thank you.
I'm assuming also that if anybody does wanna give a donation, they could contact Veterans Administration, Mike. They'll direct you in the right location, tell you where to send your money, or however.
Yeah, no, if I may, Mr. Chair. This is a very powerful monument. As you know, we do wear the honor ring on your index finger just to let people know and bring awareness to veteran suicide, that twenty-two a day are committing suicide. So, for Evan to come up and talk about this idea means a lot to the veteran community, and I've told him that. And we went out Friday in the rain to look at some stones that Benevento's is going to donate for him. Mike, you could touch on the amount of young men and women that we help in our office that are struggling, yeah?
Very, very, very sensitive issue.
It just brings awareness to it, like, like the honor rings. It just brings awareness to it, so. Yeah, as a town, you make us proud.
I wanna wish you the best of luck. Anything that we can do-
I'm sorry.
-as a board, don't hesitate to come to us.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna say, if we could take board to consider number seven out of order.
Chairman, I would move to grant the request.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Enjoy. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Know how people are proud. Next on the agenda is Police Chief Desmond. Sergeant Forbosh, traffic officer in Wilmington Police Department, re a Santa parade. Chief, we put a little white in that, and we can make you Santa right away.
He's too thin, though.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Get extra pillows.
Especially with there's only six weeks left to Christmas. I don't know if anyone-
Oh, we'll get, we'll get you beefed up.
It's crazy. So, we are here to let you know and look for your blessing, of course, for the, for December third, for our Santa parade. This is the ninth year, I believe, Dan?
Ninth year.
That we've been doing this. Gonna be a one-day event. I'll have Dan go into the specifics. But basically, we'll, you know, pretty much like in past years, we'll collect any toys or food donations that people wanna give during the parade. And we usually do very well with that. So, we're hoping again this year to get a similar response.
Yeah, Hawaii, good. We get a yes on this. So, this is our ninth year that we're gonna be seeking to do the Santa parade. We're looking to kick off at eight-thirty. We had, we stopped last year at nine, but we got some requests from some of the volunteers that we do at eight-thirty. This is a big event for, at least for me. We get a lot of volunteers, at least thirty, thirty, thirty-five volunteers that come in and help out. Not only just police officers that come in, firefighters that come in, public works. They are great. The workers out there, Jamie McGolden, the support. They come out, they help us out. And I can't say enough for the citizens of the town. They're very generous. They've always been very generous, and I, I can't thank them enough. What we, our hopes to do again this year is to kick off at eight-thirty and to do our normal parade route. We're gonna try to keep the same parade route as last year. And we're gonna drive around town, and we'll try to collect as much food for the Wilmington Food Pantry. We also collect toys for the Wilmington Fire Department's toys for Wilmington children. And we also always welcome handwritten letters for our troops that we hand over to the Veterans Services. That way, they can get sent out to different units that may be overseas or just maybe at the VA that may need some, a little, little happy thoughts this, this holiday season. And we just had a presentation about, unfortunately, veterans that take their lives. Sometimes all it takes is a little happy note from a little child to say, "Thank you for your service and thank you for what you do for your country," so.
Especially this time of year.
Yeah. So, we hope to be, we hope to get your blessing. We still plan on doing, again with your blessing, using the town hall for our silent run, is what we call it. And that is when we invite people who have children who are autistic or have some sort of a sensory condition where sirens are not, not beneficial for them. Normally, we have them come down to the town hall. This year, we anticipate around eleven-thirty. And all our vehicles will shut off all their sirens, no horns, no music. And we do a drive-through of the town hall just so that way the kids who are sensitive to sirens and loud noise can also enjoy the parade. You know, like I said, we, we hope to collect all, all the stuff so we can send it out to, to the families and to the food pantry. We hope to have a good time, so we invite everyone to come on out. We will be posting, like we do every year, on our Facebook page, the route. We have it already kinda set up, but I'm gonna do some dry runs just to make sure everything time-wise runs the way it should. Again, we always recommend that people follow us on Facebook if they can, because it gives the locations of where the parade is. Last year, we had a tracking. We're still trying to work some bugs out on that that seem to be very popular. We'll see if we can do that again this year. But that's pretty much it. Hopefully, everyone will have fun, and that's all we, we ask for.
Thank you. Questions to start out with? This is great. This is absolutely terrific. I know when they came down my neighborhood, as soon as they heard the first siren, the kids went crazy. Absolutely crazy. And I loved every minute of it to see that. And, and these times, these troubled times that we live in, to have happiness and joy like that, parents enjoy it, too. You know, and any parent who says, no, I don't want, they love it. I love it. My children are grown, but it's absolutely, just absolutely terrific. I just, you know, I compliment the department again. Again, this is Wilmington. What do we do? We just don't, you don't just ask for a paycheck. You give, and give, and give, and give. And that's what makes Wilmington special. Thank you.
Thank you. This is one of my favorite- This is one of my favorite events, because my kids are older now too, but they got it when you first started it, and it was like so much fun, like you could hear them, you know, you hear the sirens coming and just the excitement, but I still love it, because my neighborhood has kind of turned at this point, there's a lot more younger kids now, so I get to still experience it that way. So, I'm looking forward to it, and I appreciate all the effort. One question, as far as donations for toys and food, is there, do you have stuff drop off at the police station as well?
So, we do, we will have, like last year, we do, we'll have a location in the lobby.
Okay.
Put up our Christmas tree, it's usually my job. And one of our clerks, Don Amo, we go out there, we put it out, but they're more than welcome, if they can't make it, if they're not around.
Yeah.
Whatever, for whatever reason.
They can swing by.
By the police station, drop off the food, drop off toys,
Great.
Drop off letters, drop off whatever they like. We usually spend the next couple of days going through it and moving it to where, to the locations as needed, so.
Great.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Well, thank you guys, again, and your whole department, I mean, I echo the Chair's sentiment, where you guys always go above and beyond, you know, so it does not go unnoticed, and it is truly appreciated by everybody, kids and soldier people, so, who are kids at heart, right?
Again, same sentiments, I think, you know, anytime that, that, you know, that we're helping our community, helping our, you know, helping our neighbors, helping our friends, you know, helping, you know, people that you don't know, I mean, it's, it's always a good thing, so again, thank you very much, and it's a rain or shine event, correct?
Correct, or snow. We did do it one year in the snow, it was a little tough, because Public Works had to leave, but we have a nice picture from out here where we were covered in snow.
Let's hope the stars were aligned and it's a perfect day. Thank you again for all you do with that.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here, for the presentation, and for just for continued support of this event, I mean, I just think it's wonderful, as my colleagues have already mentioned, I mean, I don't have to tell you, you're the ones that get to see all the happy children around town, and if it's anything like the smiles I see on my street, then I just, I would imagine that beyond that ride is pretty amazing, so you certainly deserve that, putting all this work together, and we appreciate you going above and beyond again this year, so thank you so much.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just echo my colleagues' comments, and just a wonderful event, helping out families in need, that's what you guys are always doing, day in and day out, so, I mean, can't thank you enough for what you do on behalf of the residents in Wilmington. I can tell you, I know that a couple of my colleagues said that their kids are older and won't be there, but my kids are older too, but I'll be outside with my dog, because I love hearing the engine running down the street, so I'll be waving.
Good.
So, before you vote, we are going to do some changes to some of the trucks and stuff like that, just kind of spruce it up. I did forget to mention, last year was our first, it was our pilot program, we are going to be doing something similar to this year, where we will try to pick a child with special needs, and we'll have Santa Claus visit the house, and all his cast, characters, and of course, his wife, I can't, I can't rule her out. Well, they'll go and visit the house, last year, we were fortunate, we had a child, we were able to go up, the parade went up there, stopped for a few minutes, and it's kind of a special moment, kind of magical moment, where obviously, some people with, you know, special needs and stuff, it's, they don't get to go out where we can, they mean, they're not like us, where we can just go out to the side of the street and be able to enjoy, so, you know, we definitely welcome, we know some people proud, but if anyone has a child in a wheelchair, or just can't leave their house, you know, you can contact us, you can definitely leave a message at the police station, we'll, we'll try to work something out. What we did last year is we had the parent actually, you know, bring a gift and stuff, and we were able to kind of present it out, so we are going to be doing that as well this year, so.
Thank you. Just to remind everyone, this is Sunday, December third, and kickoff is at eight o'clock.
Eight-thirty.
Eight, eight-thirty. And you can keep track on Facebook with the Wilmington PD's Facebook page, and if someone wants to volunteer to help, just have them call the station and
Come reach out, yeah, they can either
Just reach out to the station, and they'll put you someplace.
Absolutely.
No, it's all been said, it's just another wonderful event for a wonderful town, it's really good.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the Santa Parade for December third, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have a couple of letters from Mark Rich, our Town Council, one is to Dave Robinson, Wiltch manager, North Atlantic Fuels, contamination at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center, along with another one from Mike, Mark Rich, Town Council, to Paul Skoff, manager, Sprague Operating Resources, Doing Businesses Contaminate LLC, for the contamination at the Wildwood Childhood, Wildwood Early Childhood Center. This is all just regarding the fuel spill that happened there a while back.
Thank you. Board to consider, six was done, seven was done, eight was done, we're down to board to consider nine. This is to establish a flag policy for the town of Wilmington, and I want everyone to understand that this is for town flag poles only. What we'd like to do is designate the flag poles for federal government flag, state flag, town flag, and the MIA flag.
And the various branches of the military.
And various branches of military service.
And also the DPW First Responders, that Department of Public Works also has their flag up there. And the Tree City Flag USA for one week during the month of April.
Do I have?
Chairman, I move to grant the request.
I'll second.
All those in favor? So moved. Now we come to number ten. Board to consider, a request from Christine Guy, on behalf of Where One Wilmington, to place signs on the town common for the Festival of Trees.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Next one is number eleven, which is board to consider, request of Beth Rooney, Wilmington High School Boys Lacrosse, to conduct a fundraising car wash at the public building, Public Buildings Department on Sunday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from nine AM till twelve PM, with the rain date of Sunday, May twenty-sixth.
There are no conflicts with that date.
Move to grant the request.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Now, public comments.
Can you go over there?
Yes, please. And state your name and your address, please.
Bonnie Smith, thirty Marion Street, I'm also the Chair of the Historical Commission. I was under the impression that we're going to be chatting about the reuse committee tonight, and I have gotten that wrong.
We put it off.
Okay.
But we are going to be bringing it up at our next meeting, and just so you know, I was going to recommend someone from the Historical Commission.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much, that was, I was going to respectfully request that. Also, everybody's announcing things that are happening on December third, we're having our Holiday Social on December, it's going to be a very busy day, and we're also hosting a Veterans Coffee this Wednesday at the museum, so everyone's welcome, thank you so much.
What time is the Holiday Social and the coffee?
The coffee's going to start at nine-thirty, and go until whenever, and the Holiday Social starts at one and goes to about four on the third.
And what day is the, the coffee is?
Is this Wednesday, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Right.
And then the social was the
Goes until the coffee runs out, right?
Yeah, yeah, just keep filling it up, just keep filling it up. Thank you.
And the social is the third.
Is the third, and so I guess it's the Festival of Trees, and so is the, you know, the, yeah, so very festive town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, before I make my comments, could I just get a clarification on something? There was a letter from the Town Council regarding the oil spill at the Wildwood, and I looked in the book, there was like a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar amount that it cost us, have we been able to recover any of that?
We're still in a little litigation with that, so right now, we can't address it.
One of the, one of the reasons why I asked that question is, from what I understand, the tank overflowed, and so I was hoping the board might take some action on any future fillings of any tanks, to have maybe even a representative from the Police Department there, and a representative from the Fire Department, when they are fueling the tanks up, so that we can have at least two witnesses and make sure that there's no overflowing. As you know, we have like, I think it's about twenty to thirty thousand gallons of fuel tanks beside our water well field at the DPW, and so that potentially could be catastrophic if that was to overflow and we lose our well fields, so if we can just keep that in mind, maybe somebody might want to put forth a motion about that later, but I did want to take the time to thank Mr. West, I ran into Mr. West, and he addressed a question that I had at a prior meeting relative to the MBTA train schedules, and I want to thank you, Mr. West, for getting back to me and letting me know that those times where the train crosses North Wilmington, where it's shown as not a stop, is actually a flag stop, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so
And many towns, by the way, have that, have flag stops.
Okay, so, the issue with that is, during pouring rain, snowstorms, fog, let's just say that there's a lady out there holding a toddler on each hand, trying to keep the kid from running out onto the tracks, and then having to flag the train down, I don't know if you can see this from here, Mr. West, can you see that amount?
Yeah.
It's five-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars per year that we pay to the MBTA, and it keeps going up every year. Actually, if you divide it by fifty-two weeks, it's ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars per week, and I believe when you guys approve warrants, you do it two weeks at a time, so that would be like, I guess, twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars per meeting, so that's a large amount. I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think it's actually probably prudent to require the MBTA to not have flag stops, but to actually mandate the train to actually stop there. Let me just ask you something, Mr. West, if you're in agreement with me, as you know, there was a fatality where the train killed a lady, and I'm of the opinion and belief that there's a very high degree of probability, maybe even a hundred percent, that if that train was stopped there, like I had requested many years ago, that that train would have saw that the lights weren't working, and the arms weren't down, and if he was stopped, that lady would still be alive. Is that a reasonable assumption on my part?
I'm not going to go there, Kevin, I, I, you can't
Okay, I just
I can't make an assumption, especially when it's in somebody's life, I mean, that's
Just so you know, that there's litigation going on with that, so we're not going to, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to comment on it until the litigation is completed.
Yeah, I'm actually not asking you to comment on any litigation, but what I am asking you to do is to take some preventative action so that nothing else happens. I think it might be prudent, even tonight, for the board to take some action, maybe somebody would be kind enough to the rest of the town to put forth a motion to have the board contact the MBTA and request them to mandate the trains to stop there, but, you know, legally, you might have to have it as an agenda item, I don't know, I just kind of think that that would be the prudent thing to do. Can you, can you guys see this, Mr. Bendel and Mr. Kira, this amount? Does that seem like a lot of money to you? Like, for example, if, if you worked in Boston, and that train didn't stop there, and you had to take your car to Boston, you might be a little bit upset with that, wouldn't you? You don't want to answer that? Okay. The other thing I was going to mention is, can you see this amount? Can you guys see this amount? It's a one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-million-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, that's the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget, and if you divide that by fifty-two weeks, it comes out to just under two-point-five-million dollars a week, so every two weeks when you guys meet, you're roughly approving warrants for around five million dollars?
Does this have anything to do with tonight's agenda?
Mr., thank you, Mr. Smagley, for bringing that up, for questioning about the agenda. Mr. DePalma, did you get a chance to look at the agenda before tonight's meeting?
Of course I did, Mr.
Oh, yeah, you, you put it together, you made the agenda, right?
I
Okay, so, on the agenda, there would be warrants that get approved, right? And that's a financial matter? When you approve warrants at every Selectman meeting, therefore paying bills, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, when somebody brings up a financial matter, and there's a financial matter that's on the agenda, such as a warrant, that would be relative to the budget and the agenda, right?
Well, it depends, sir.
Pardon me?
It depends, sir. What are you getting at, you know?
What, what am I getting at?
Yes.
Oftentimes, when I bring things up, and I ask questions, and I ask for action on the board, and you try to shut me off, saying that my comments or questions are not relative to the agenda, it's a little disturbing, knowing that if my numbers are right, and my calculations are right, you're roughly, you're roughly approving five million dollars per meeting in, in warrants. Can you tell us tonight how much money that you approved in the warrants? What the total amount was, Mr. DePalma?
It's all been a town meeting, our budgets have approved the town meeting.
No, no, what I'm asking you for is, you approved the warrants on the meeting tonight. For the rest of the community, can you tell us how much money was approved tonight in total warrants?
I can't right at this moment, no.
Well, you voted on it, you voted on it tonight to approve warrants, and you don't know that, that amount?
I'm not going to get into the financial end of it right now.
You're already, you're already into it.
I'm not, I'm not going to answer it.
Did you vote on the warrants tonight?
You know we did, Mr. McDonald.
And I'm just simply asking you
Mr. McDonald.
What is the dollar amount that was approved tonight to vote on and approve the warrants? Did you get a total dollar amount?
I don't have a dollar right now in front of me.
Maybe I could, maybe Mrs. Misselli could answer this question. Mrs. Selectman, Misselli, can you tell us what banks the town has its money with?
McDonald, all questions will go through the Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. DePalma, can you tell us which bank is holding this amount of money?
Nothing.
No?
No, because I have no idea what it is.
Are you familiar with banks around the country that have collapsed?
I understand, there have been a lot of them, and I'm not going to get involved
I just, I just wanted to ask you, I just wanted to ask
I'm not going to get involved with it.
Just wanted to ask a very simple question, have you or any members performed any stress Have you or any members performed any stress tests on the financial institutions that hold money for the town to see?
I'm not gonna get into that.
What's, what would happen?
With all due respect, I'm not gonna get involved with that. We have, we have a department in town.
Do you think that's a lot of money? Eighty-six million dollars in one bank?
Don't insult us now, please. Now you're insulting us.
Am I insulting him, Mr. West?
Of course it's a lot of money, but we're not gonna get involved in it.
I mean, do you think that you should know what banks the town has its money in? It's, it's a relatively simple question. The other, the other, past meeting, I, I asked the name of the town's financial advisor. Were you able to get that name for us?
I'm not answering any more questions of yours, 'cause I'm just not.
You don't want to answer it?
Put it in writing to us.
Yeah, it's in writing to the town.
I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it? Well, maybe since this board appoints people to the Economic Development Committee, maybe it'd be ki- you know, there might be some children watching this meeting, Mr. DePalma. Would you be, would you be kind enough, would you be kind enough maybe to give you a definition of, say, what the economy is?
Mr. McDonald, would you give us, this is not on the agenda?
The warrant, the financial matters aren't on the agenda? If you're approving what averages out to be five million dollars per meeting, you don't even know how much money you're approving? Okay, thank you very much. No more further questions.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Now we go announcements.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to, first of all, take the opportunity to thank our Veterans Service Office, who put on yet again another wonderful veteran ceremony this past weekend. So my gratitude to Mr. Semaglia, Mr. Frotten, and to Patty as well for putting on, and it was a wonderful turnout in my estimation and it was a great tribute to, to all of our veterans, so thank you for that. I also wanted to congratulate, and take this opportunity to congratulate the members of Wilmington-Pop Warner have had a fantastic fall. The, the football players, coaches, and cheerleaders have had some great success. We've got a number of teams headed down to Florida. We had a number of teams compete out of state in Connecticut this past weekend. And that is just such a strong tradition of a great program. And I'm so glad to see that they're still having great success this fall and I wish them all well. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I too want to comment on Veterans Day. There was nothing more beautiful than when I got up to the podium to speak and I saw those flags straight out. The wind was blowing just right and every flag was straight out. And what that blue sky up, up above, there was nothing but beauty that day and I compliment. I know you had a lot to do with the weather, sir.
Yeah.
I know you were on the phone a lot.
Yep. Another great Eagle's Camp project.
Okay, important, new business.
Mr. Chairman, I got a few things. One, I just want to, just for everyone's information, that the last meeting, I was not here. I was actually in the hospital for a few days. So I just wanted to thank board members, the chair, and Lou for, you know, and various people checking in on me. And unfortunately, I was there for Halloween. I didn't get any candy. I got a blood transfusion. So I guess that makes me a full-fledged vampire. But again, on Veterans Day services, as you know, I was with the men and men on the, on the swain green, but I was certainly, you know, part of the, part of the procession. It was nice of everybody that showed up, both our veterans, certainly that we're here to honor, and our, you know, various civic groups that were their scouts and, and the people just, you know, people at large. So it was just nice for everyone that, you know, participated in some way. I think it was a great honor and tribute to our, to our veterans, both past, past veterans and present veterans. I did have a question on, I know we have our minutes from the May thirtieth meeting, but we've, we've got some past minutes that are due as well as the executive session for the, the two meetings with Mr. Hooper and also Mr. Semaglia. I didn't know if we were gonna have those forthcoming or what the status of those were.
I'll see.
Yeah, they'll be coming in, in executive session.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is that, as you know, one of the things that I've been pretty vocal about is the town manager hiring process. And what I'd like to do through the chair is that I think that we should probably have an agenda item to develop an actual process for the hiring of the town manager. I mean, right now, we have a committee that's gonna be putting an RFP out there and soliciting resumes and taking from those resumes, maybe doing interviews. But at some point, they're gonna be sitting here and saying, hey, we've got, you know, we've got information that we want to share with this board. And right now, we, we don't have a formal process that we're, you know, how are we gonna accept what they, what they're offering, I guess, is, or what they'll, the result of their work? So I think we should probably, you know, come up with a, you know, whatever our process is and, you know, maybe work with the screening committee to, in concert, to assist in that so that we're not stalling and saying, well, gee, you know, we don't know what we're doing. You know, let's wait a couple of weeks. I mean, we've got time on our hands right now that we won't have in a month from now when, when they're showing us either, either resumes or what, what their result is. So I think we, we need to get into that mode now or as soon as we can.
Well, they will, when they come to a conclusion, they will present to the board, they will crest an agenda item to present the names of individuals that they feel would represent Wilmington the best as their town manager. At that time, we're going to have a right, and tell me if I'm wrong, but to have conversations with these individuals before us. As far as the format is concerned, there is no format. But as always with the board, I think it's just, it's best to leave it as each individual has questions and answers, questions they have, and everyone will have time to address each individual with their concerns after reviewing their, the reports that we get from the subcommittee. And then, you know, it'll come a point in time when we will be voting.
Because one of, one of the things that I would like is, is that I would like to make sure that it, and I, I would hope that the board members would agree, but I'd like to see every resume that comes through, not just the four, five, or whatever that they recommend. Because just because they recommend these X amount of candidates, if there's twelve candidates out there, I may or may not agree with their recommendation.
Then, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna say that I believe we came up with the whole process when we decided what the, and, and correct me if I'm wrong. When we decided with the subcommitting, what they were gonna do is they were gonna vet, go through resumes and present us, so we didn't have to go through every single resume. So that's the whole purpose of the committee, so we don't have to see every resume. And they bring, you know, what they think is the best. You know, three or four to us. And at that time, we will review, we can interview, and that's how the process would go. I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to, to do what they're already doing.
Then, if we don't, if we don't agree with the three or four that they present to us-
Right, right. We don't have to accept them.
We can't ask for other names to-
For more, yeah.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I don't, I don't think we need another policy or procedure. You know, Joe Fair from KP spelled it out pretty clearly to us all. I think Frank, I, I also said the same thing you just said. If we get twelve of them and they only narrow it down to four, I want to see all twelve. And, and Joe Fair said, no, that's, that's not how the process works. And Ms. Misselli just elaborated what the process is. And, and Mr. DePalma made a good point that if we don't accept any one of those five, then there's a, there's a pool of another seven or eight to, to look at and give us that opportunity. So I don't think we need to, another, another policy, another procedure. It's been spelled out to us. We, the, the search committee came to us. They wanted to hire a, a firm. They put out an RFP. My understanding at the last meeting that they actually interviewed a firm that they were very much in favor of, and I believe it was recommended to be hired. So I was a little surprised that it wasn't on a board to consider. But I don't know that it needs to be on a board to consider or is it just up to the town manager to, to sign that contract to, to, to move that process forward?
Yeah, I believe that, that's the way my understanding was, talking to Rob Peterson, president, chair of that board, and Bernie Lynch, who was the gentleman they hired with his committee and our town council.
Okay, so it was just-
Contract is signed and offered to them.
Right.
And he's, I talked to him today.
So the, the process, and we should let the community know, the process is, is going the way it should be.
Yep.
And, and with the, we've hired a, the search committee has hired a, a consultant firm. And, and that consultant firm, from what I understand, is, is outstanding.
If I, if I may, I'm sorry. We, they did put a lot of resumes, the, excuse me, referrals, if you will. And we did reach out to many of the towns that have used them and all their, their, all the reviews were perfect.
Yep, I, and, and I would, you know, I would concur in seeing that, that particular meeting. And so let, let the process work. You know, you got, we have a search committee. We now have a, a consultant. They're gonna do their work, bring it to the search committee, and the search committee's gonna bring it to us. And we're going to vet those, those individuals and, and interview them, just as we did with town council. When we had town council came in, we had special meetings that were posted and we interviewed each of, each of those individuals that was narrowed down to. So I, I think we're, we're right on the way we're going.
Well, Les, with all due respect, I would like to see all resumes. Because again, you know, my opinion would be, I may or may not, you know, it's kind of like a restaurant. You know, somebody says, hey, I want to go to, you know, a particular type of restaurant. I may take your recommendation, I may not.
Well, what I look at on that is, the first thing you're doing is, if we ask for every resume that they get, I believe you're discrediting the, the search committee. They're, they're, they've been tasked with the responsibility of presenting to the board, the select board, excuse me, the names of qualified individuals that they feel will represent Wilmington as a town manager. And if we're gonna ask for all the resumes, then why are we even having a search committee? They're, they're tasked with going through these, weeding out the ones that they don't feel are a good fit for Wilmington. And then they're, and again, they're gonna present us with whether it's two, three, four, there's no number. But at the end of the day, if we reject all those, they're gonna have to bring more, more into us. But as far as us reviewing all the, the applications, the applicants, I disagree with that strongly. But that's just my opinion.
Just mentioned that.
Pardon me?
I said, that's why I just brought it up, because we had mentioned that when Joe was here, that that was the whole point, that if we saw all of them, and I agree, I remember Kevin saying that and the same thing. And we, he had said that's, he didn't advise it. And then we had said that we would leave it to the committee to review and just bring them forth. So if we go back and review them all, it kind of, what did we have a committee for? You know what I mean? It's to help be easy, to make it easier for us.
Committee is to help make a recommendation, but not necessarily say we emphatically want.
No, they don't.
No, they're not. They're gonna present what they consider.
It's just, to me, it's just like using, you know, a headhunter, for lack of a better term, job placement, where they're gonna get all the, you know, applicants and they're gonna, you know, take the top, whatever, three, four, five, and present them to us so we don't have to weed through all the ones that may not be a fit.
We'll see how the process goes. Like I said, I, I'm more, you know, with, with due respect, we didn't have a, a real process with the temporary town manager search. And I just think that we need to make things more formalized, but I'll go with the will of the board.
I think things, I think things, Mr. West, to be quite honest with you, I think things will be a lot more organized because when the time comes, there's gonna be individuals sitting before us and they're gonna be saying, we're gonna be submitting these five individuals for your recommendation. And remember, that's a recommendation, that's all. They're presenting it to us. And then we, as a board, have to agree that these, out of these five, B is the best. Or C, or whatever. Or none of them, we don't like any of them. And we want the committee to go back, review again, and present another group if we have to. But as, as far as presenting all applicants, I, I disagree with that strongly. I have faith in the committee that we have, number one. And, and I have faith in this board that when that committee presents us with the, the individuals, that we will do the right thing to bring Wilmington forward. But I don't want to get entangled with, well, you know, you're just, what, what are they there for? If we're gonna look at all the resumes again? Because when we get the, when we get our rec, when we get our, the recommendations, we are going to be conducting an interview right here. So I have, I have no concerns with the way they will be presenting it because I believe they will present it in the best interest of Wilmington. And when we get it again, we're gonna review what they give us. And if we don't like it, we can reject them all and ask them to bring back more.
And I do have one other comment, if I may.
Sure.
Specific to the warrants, just, just so the public knows is that when we vote on these treasury warrants, we've reviewed them individually. We receive them, we sign them. So even though we may not have an amount in front of us, we reviewed and had the opportunity to literally review and question each and every line item. So, you know, just so, just so people know that, you know, again, we can't say, well, gee, it's, you know, X amount of dollars per warrant in front of us. But we have had the opportunity through the, you know, through the town manager's office and through the town treasurer, you know, because it's already signed by the town manager and signed by the treasurer by the time we got it, that we get them. So they are reviewed and we, and again, collectively, individually, we had the opportunity to, to make questions about each line item. So I just want to make sure that people know that we're not just-
We receive the warrants every week.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a clarifying question? Are we still under new business?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that, that is reserved for items that could not be reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting? And although some of the points that have been made, I think is a healthy discussion, I think it's unfortunate that they're being discussed without advance notice to the public. I think that if we're gonna discuss these things, we ought to let people know.
Yeah.
And this, this section is reserved, as you know, for items not reasonably anticipated by you forty-eight hours in advance.
Thank you. Anything else on the new business? Important dates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On November thirteenth, curbside collection of yard waste. November fifteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to twelve PM. And that's also the Veterans Coffee at the museum. And November eighteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. Excuse me. November twenty-second, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. November twenty-fourth, town offices will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving. November twenty-fifth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. November twenty-seventh, select board, town hall, room nine, seven PM. Excuse me. Also, November twenty-seventh is a discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for FY 2024. At the select board meeting at town hall, room nine, seven PM. November twenty-seventh, curbside collection of yard waste. November twenty-ninth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. December first, Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Church, lower level, ten AM to nine PM. December second is the brush drop off at Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. December second, Christmas tree lighting, Town Common, four PM. December second, Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Church, lower level, nine AM, excuse me, to nine PM. December third, Festival of Trees, St. Dorothy's Lower Church, I think I just said that. December third, Holiday Social, Hardin Tavern, one PM to four, four PM. December fourth to the eighth, it's collection of, curbside collection of yard waste. December seventh is Santa's Workshop, Town- December 7th is Santa's Workshop, Town Hall, room nine, and December 11th is the select board, Town Hall, room nine, 7:00 PM, and I don't think we put on the police Santa Parade.
No, we didn't.
December 3rd.
December 3rd, starting at 8:30. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And now salute to service, I will turn over to Greg Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and because of this past weekend's honoring of Veterans Day, we thought it was fitting that tonight, not only, we not single out any individual, and we didn't want to thank anyone even from just Wilmington, but to thank rather all veterans who have served, past and present, in Wilmington and beyond, we're grateful for their service to our country, and we salute them. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everyone, and have a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy.